Let the record reflect we reconvene with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion for reorganization minutes of January 2nd, 2019.
No moves.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion for the executive minutes of January 14th, 2019.
No moves.
Second.
Previously discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of January 14th, 2019.
No moves.
Second.
Any discussion corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, welcome.
Everybody.
Yes, to a big crowd. But many more watching at home. A couple of things I want to cover. One, shortly, Austria in her report has a great news on Trail Grant, so she will be sharing that, so it's a little teaser. As we know that the government shutdown has ended as of today, we don't know what the future brings, but we know what the past did bring, which was stress on quite a few families. We, as was announced at the last meeting, we use the resources of the Henry Perkins Fund to provide interest-free loans, and one of our resolutions today is to ratify an interest-free loan to a family who is dealing with the stresses of having this two-income family, one of the members, a longtime federal employee, and trying to make ends meet with childcare and mortgage payments and so on. So that was truly made a big difference in town. And the other strain that has happened, and it's a tough time of year anyway, is on the food pantries. And so, under Carmelo's leadership, we have a Borough of Madison Food Drive to benefit the Interface Food Pantry. And so we will, even though the shutdown is over, we want to replenish those shelves. So food donations can be brought right here to Hartley Dodge up until February 4th, and suggested food items, canned fruit, pasta and pasta sauce, cereal, rice, dry milk, tuna fish, that's canned tuna fish, canned meats, macaroni and cheese, canned soups, baby cereal, and baby wipes. So for all those, please help those in need by bringing those down here to Borough Hall up until September, up until February 4th. At our last meeting, there was discussion on the dog park, and there was consensus for the committee to move forward with the location at the Memorial Park, will be coming back at a later date. But there is also some concerns shared by the scouts as far as the fact that they use that site for camping. We know that the timing of this dog park will not interfere with this year's annual campout, and so there is a resolution approving their annual campout that will be happening in June. And I've charged the Parks Committee to be working on a new site, probably in the MRC area, which has extensive trails and great resources as far as running water, which is also a requirement, to create a new campout area. Back on December 10th, we had a presentation on affordable housing, just to help residents understand the impact and what the background is and what is going on in the state and what is happening in Madison. And so I just want a quick update on that. Our professional team provided that information on Madison's affordable housing obligation. Since that date, we have participated in multiple mediation sessions with representatives of Fair share Housing Center, guided by the special master appointed by the court, and we also attended a mandatory case management conference on January 11th in Morris County Superior Court, and we have another negotiation session scheduled for January 30th. For the foreseeable future, I will provide an update at least once a month so our residents understand where we are in the process and what the next steps are for Madison. But we are in litigation at this time, so until we're at the finish line, attorneys have advised me I'm very limited to the specific information and what details I can share. But once our affordable housing obligation is confirmed, we'll host public sessions to explain the numbers behind the obligation and the plan to satisfy that obligation. And always keep in mind, Madison has a strong tradition of providing affordable housing and will be guided by the same principles that have served us so well in the past. So we expect to know that obligation in the coming months. And at any time, if you want to look at the presentation that was done back in December or all the information we shared, just go to Rosenet, type in affordable housing in the search bar, and that will take you to the site that will give you more background. Also related to the shutdown, the Madison PBA asked Borough employees to donate money to buy gift cards to help buy groceries for Pat Brown. Pat is the son of Russ Brown, our building code official. Pat is also a former Madison Police employee and now works for the United Coast Guard, and of course, for the shutdown, did not receive a paycheck. So as of this past Friday, over $1,000 of gift cards were mailed to Pat to help him get through, and I'm sure he will be sharing that with others. So thank you to the PBA for that leadership and for all the employees that donated. And speaking of the Brown family, we want to extend best wishes to Russ Brown for his speedy recovery for major surgery last week. And probably contrary to his doctor's orders, he was here for a visit today. That is the dedication of Russ Brown. Other things going on, yesterday, along with Councilman John Hoover, I attended the 30th Anniversary Ribbon Cutting for Studio Yoga. Studio Yoga is on the second and third floors of the James Building, right there on Green Village Road, and it was great to recognize a business, not only for 30 years of success in our downtown, but the fact that they were well ahead of the curve in reinvention of downtowns with a fitness wellness business, which has really become a norm in Main Street, USA. And there was Studio Yoga in 1988, getting people with their yoga mats rolled up under their arms, walking down King's Road to Green Village to a class. And now I'm going to come down to present a proclamation to our health officer. Mike Fitzpatrick, please come forward. As you know, we do these proclamations to raise awareness on very important subjects, and this is one of those. Something we all think about when we're buying or selling a house, and probably never do it in between, if you live in a house for many years, it's a good time to think about it. And this is Radon Action Month. Whereas elevated radon gas within homes have been identified as significant public health concern, whereas radon is naturally occurring radioactive gas that is second-leading cause of lung cancer, causing as many 500 lung cancer deaths annually in New Jersey. And whereas elevated radon levels are found in 1 in 15 homes across the United States, and I guess that ratio is much higher in northern New Jersey, and pose a serious health threat to families residing in these homes. And whereas any home that may have high levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not. And whereas radon testing is easy, inexpensive, and elevated levels of radon can be effectively reduced at the cost of a typical home repair. And whereas a significant number of homes in Madison are likely to have elevated levels of radon. Whereas if all New Jersey homes with radon concentrations above four... Yeah, I did look that up. Pico curries per liter were mitigated, about 83 lives could be saved this year. Now, therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim the month of January 2019 as Radon Action Month, and call upon all residents to test their homes for radon and to reduce radon levels if elevated levels are found, so they can protect their families from serious health risk of radon. Michael, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you very much. You know, the most important thing is that I appreciate the Board of Health Support and the council and mayor's support in this, and we do have an initiative where there's free radon testing for residents, there's no charge to the residents, no charge to municipality. It's funded by a New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Grant, it's a refundable grant. So we have canisters available over at 28 Walnut Street at the Health Department, and residents are encouraged to come and test. This is a great time of the year between now and April 15th, so it's all the cooler times of the year when you're likely going to have elevated levels. So I thank you for your support and hope residents participate in this important initiative. Thank you, Mayor.
Let's go off about late. Good evening.
Thank you.
I'm a little out of order because I misplaced one of my notes. There it is. One other thing I would just want to bring attention to, as most people are aware, that application has been filed for the Madison Theater site, and so that will be going to the HPC. A development application will be heard on February 12th at 7:30 PM, the council chambers, so right here. And that is because that's a building in the historic district and which is requesting a demolition of that building, so it goes to HPC. To help with the process, the Borough has provided an attorney, professional planner, structural engineer, and historic preservation architect to assist the HPC board in this process. So again, that is February 12th at 7:30. And let's go to reports from committees. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. First, I'll talk about open space. The Borough applied for funds from the county to create a handicap accessible trail at the Madison Recreation Complex, which seniors, moms and dads with strollers, the folks at Cheshire Home would be able to find a stable paved trail. This will occur. We were rewarded $130,000, which is what we requested, and in about a year, we should see the trail in place. We are also applying for another Green Acres Grant of $500,000 to help pay down the debt of the purchase of the MRC. From the Police Department, the Police Department received a grant of $3,320 for the replacement of expired body armor for our officers. Body armor has a shelf life of five years and should be replaced around the five-year mark. The armor will slowly lose some of its protective qualities over time. It doesn't suddenly go bad, so the grant is grateful because we do need to replace some of our armor. During the month of January, the Madison Police Department received a donation of 10 ballistic vest carriers and ballistic plates that are worn over the officer's normal body armor during armed encounters. This equipment will be carried in each patrol vehicle and was donated by a legacy of a hero, the Lance Corporal Chris Cosgrove Foundation. And the mission of the foundation is to provide financial support for scholarships in individuals or their families who are in need as a result of their service to our country through the US military, particularly the US Marine Corps, police, fire, and other first responders in New Jersey, New York, Pennsylvania, and Connecticut. So Chief Datchison and Madison thanked the foundation for their generous donation that will help protect our officers in the most dangerous situations. And then on the 17th of January, Sergeant Craig Pirelli graduated from the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs Police Command and Leadership Academy. In recognizing the challenges in law enforcement, the academy made a commitment to be the forefront of innovation and change. The primary component of that commitment is the development of our future police leaders. And so Sergeant Pirelli just finished that, and the candidates with the greatest leadership potential are selected for this highly competitive program from all areas of the state, to include many officers from the Madison Police Department who have been afforded this prestigious opportunity in the past. And then from the Fire Department, you know, we do mutual aid, we help each other out. And on Sunday morning, the Madison Fire Department was dispatched to assist the Whippany Fire Department, and this was smoke belling out of the Lexus Building on Route 10, and it was a malfunctioning waste oil heating furnace, so they were back shortly. Then again, on Friday evening, our Fire Department responded to Sunrise of Madison because of smoke, and Florham Park was called in to help us. And after checking all HVAC equipment and laundry equipment, the cause of the smoke was found to be a burnt-out washing machine motor. And then later on that Friday evening, Madison was dispatched to assist Florham Park Fire Department, and they were dispatched to 1,005 Sun Valley Way for the natural gas odor inside the building, and it was a PSC issue, and they were called in. So that is it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Mrs. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Wednesday, the chief financial officer submitted the annual debt statement to the State of New Jersey Division of Local Government Services. This document must be submitted to the Division as per New Jersey law. The statement summarizes the municipal and school board debt. For the last several years, the Borough Council has adopted a pay-as-you-go strategy where capital items are paid in full when completed instead of borrowing long-term. This strategy has helped the Borough Municipal Government maintain a triple-A credit rating. Tonight, we're going to hear a presentation on the financial operations of both our water and electric utility. And I'm happy to say that we have some good news to report, as utilities performed well in 2018. We will also hear from Jim Matina, our Electric Utility Superintendent, who is in charge of our alignment and distribution system. I just want to bring in a personal reflection on our utilities. The water utility, whether people understand it or not, is actually run by three people. And so we have a great many wells that have to be maintained, besides all kinds of other things, and you'll get that from the utility liaison. But one of the greatest things that we have is our electric utility. Our electric utility has been very good to us. We, you know, besides the surplus, we have a utility that takes care of us. We go back to Sandy and we think about how lucky we were, in just a few days, we all had electricity and whatever. So I'm very proud to say that we have these utilities that are doing so well, and very proud of the people who work in those departments. They're doing a great job. So at our next council meeting on February 11th, the council will hear a presentation on the municipal budget. The department heads will then come and present their accomplishments, goals, and objectives on the February 25th council meeting. Residents are reminded that all of these meetings are being recorded and available to watch online, and all the presentation material is available on our annual budget process page on Rosenet. Please encourage all of your neighbors, please, and those who are watching us on television, please be encouraged to come down and listen to this, these budget presentations. It's very, very good, and I think that we'll have some good surprises for later. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Mr. Rowe.
I had a report.
You can do it, Pat.
I still have a few items left. From the Electric Department, the department had no power flow at the Madison Ball Apartments. A wire was broken due to the high wind, but they were able to restore power quickly within 25 minutes. They've also been working with the Meter Department, customer serviceman, changing commercial meters out to put in the new smart meters, and we'll have more about that at a future meeting. From the Water Department, water samples on regulated contaminants were taken for state-mandated testing for total chloroform, E. coli, and volatile organic compounds. Fire and domestic lines have been energized to the New Atlantic Health Building at your old farm, so that project is moving along at a pretty good pace. We did have a report of no water at three addresses that all turned out to be frozen pipes inside the house, so please be aware of that, make sure your house stays warm during the winter. And then we have an important note for all residents, merchants, and landlords. We had an icing condition on East Lane that became a hazard due to an unauthorized use of a fire hydrant. The hydrant was not properly shut off. We want to remind all residents that fire hydrants are for official use only. Next, we have a report of a water main leak at A. Britton, and it was found to be a resident's some pump that was putting water on the sidewalk and curb line and then freezing, so please pay attention, especially in the freezing months where you're pumping water from your automatic some pump, you may not realize you're endangering others. And last but not least, they did multiple meter installations and other head replacements, and some frozen water meters also had to be replaced. They've been installing water radio transmitters for remote water meter reading for outside registers and for the new smart meter system. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. One item, working off of Councilwoman Bailey's report about the body armor, the material in the body armor is, like all protective materials, does deteriorate over time. That applies to the material in bicycle helmets and safety helmets. So, you know, please, if you have a safety helmet for a child, if you can, replace it after five years. From the Engineering Department, the 2019 road improvement projects, we anticipate advertising for them in February and awarding the contracts in May, and then hopefully putting shovels in the ground as soon as the weather cooperates. An informal public meeting on this will be held, and it is now tentatively set for February 11th here at 6 PM. We continue working on the water main replacements and reconstruction. We're also working with PSCNG on their 2019 gas main replacements. They, and as you have all seen, on Central Avenue, we are finished repaving Central Avenue, and they completed striping, so the long odyssey of paving Central Avenue has come to a close. From Public Works, Public Works has a new hook lift truck. A hook lift truck is advantageous to public service in that it can be quickly converted back and forth. So the truck can be sent out to remove snow, drop salt, but then in a storm condition where limbs are coming down, it can be quickly, it can be quickly converted and sent out to go pick up debris. So that's going to be a big advantage for the town. The Town Swap, which was a big success last year, is set for May 11th at Public Works, and I understand that Marie Kondo and tidying up is a very big thing here in Madison. I'd ask you to hold on to those items in your garage despite what Ms. Kondo says and bring them to the Town Swap. You know, DPW continues to service and maintain all of the town's vehicles, they maintain the snowplows, so that in the case of snow, which I understand we may be getting tomorrow or Wednesday, everything will be in shape. They maintain the ice skating pond. Christmas is now officially over because we've picked up all of the Christmas trees. So, you know, please understand that DPW is, like the electric utility people and like the water people, they are, they do a whole lot of stuff that we may not see, but that we really appreciate and would miss if they weren't doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to report on SCAC first, the City Citizens Advisory Committee. The Chair and the Vice Chair met with the Senior Center Director to be briefed on programs and her views on the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. They brainstormed some ideas for the committee to consider. The general idea is to pick up one or two projects we can work on together with senior volunteers to increase engagement and involvement. The overall goal is to increase engagement of those in the senior community. Talked with the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee members, the Chair did, who agreed that one or two easy projects to start would increase engagement and hopefully, in the longer term, involvement of more people. Under consideration is having a Senior Citizens Advisory Committee meeting at Rexford Tucker. In the Senior Center, the first all-colored edition of the newsletter came out. Thanks, thank you, Michael, for your help in doing that. It was great. It looked really terrific. They have a few new programs underway. By the way, this is produced by volunteers that come in on Tuesday toward the end of the month to help out. There's a couple of programs, there are new programs that are underway. One is called Pickleball, and that's a new activity on Mondays and Tuesdays between 2:00 and 4:00. It's in the open gym in the Great Room. There's a presentation coming up on February 13th from 10:00 to 12:00 entitled Handling Stress with Diet and Meditation, and there will be several people there to provide instructions, including a dietitian from ShopRite and an exercise instructor. The ARP tax prep season is here. Each appointment starts on Wednesday starting February 6th to April 10th at 9:00 AM, 10:30, 10:30 rather, and 12:00 PM. In Dial-A-Ride News, the Senior Center is now offering two monthly mall trips. The locations are based on a survey of our residents. The first trip is to Target on February 13th from 10:00 to 12:00. The second trip is to the Short Hills Mall on February 27th from 1:00 to 3:00. Anthony Cagiano, a trained Medicare counselor through Norwest Cap's SHIP program, is now taking appointments for anyone with questions regarding Medicare. He's available on Wednesday mornings by appointment between 9:30 and 12:30. And DDC, DDC held a reorganization meeting on January 17th and elected Sue Whitehorn Chair and Eric Rains Vice Chair. Under business development, under consideration is hiring a part-time Madison Arts and Event Coordinator for the Community Arts Center. The marketing and branding team will meet with the Executive Committee of DDC to kick off the campaign for marketing and branding. Taste of Madison is Monday, March 18th at the Brooklake Country Club. $100 for VIP at 6:00 PM, $65 for general admission. The DDC's Marketing and Economic Development Committee will begin work on a new marketing and branding campaign next week. Working with local professionals, the committee will seek to establish a defined brand identity to help inform the future public relations materials and wayfinding signage. DDC is planning a new event to be called the Rose City Summer Fest on the calendar for June 15th. An planning committee has been formed and will meet later this week. At the regular meeting of the DDC on February 21st, the commission will hold a planning session that will include review of the current bylaws and committee structure. Chamber of Commerce, new this spring will be the first Chamber Camp Fair, scheduled for Sunday, March 24th, at the Madison Community Arts Center from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. The Madison Area Y and Madison Harding Soccer League are key sponsors. Additional sponsorships and exhibitors are being sought. The Chamber's monthly happy hour has been moved to the fourth Wednesday of each month at the new location at Shanghai Jazz. All are welcome to come. The Chamber is developing a Madison map, which will include a directory/gift guide, information on events, important local phone numbers, and basic parking information. Ads to businesses are being sold. Upcoming events, the Easter Fun Fest is Saturday, April 13th, Ladies Night is Thursday, May 9th, May Day is May 4th, and Madison into Yellow will be held May 5th through 12th. The MATC, the museum, the current renovation phase should be completed in a few weeks. For the Recreation Advisory Committee, they discussed RAC membership criteria, and they reviewed the status of each youth sport. Discussed whether RAC is the right forum to have representative from the Cub Scouts, and I believe that the Park Commission seems to be in a better place to do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Health, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. As already reported, it's Radon Awareness Month, free radon testing kits are available to the Health Department. In addition, lead test kits are also available for residents for charge at the Health Department. Dog and cat owners are given one last reminder, renew your pet license by Friday, February 1st, or there will be a $10 late fee assessed. The public health nurses reporting there are still high levels of flu, and they still have vaccine available, make an appointment, and you can get it done at the Health Department. And finally, the Health Department has scheduled health screenings for adult residents. Blood analysis will be in March, and men and women's screenings will be in May. Please call the Health Department for more information and look for details on Rosenet in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any communication... Any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor and Council received a letter dated January 25th from Mr. Severio Alacchio on Bellew Avenue regarding affordable housing.
All right, we're on to our first invitations for discussion. For our audience, this is limited to items on our agenda, so that means you can come up and comment on the budget presentation that will be come up shortly. Any of the ordinances will have hearings, so that's when you can comment on those, or you can comment on the resolutions, and I will quickly go through those resolutions so you know what they are, and also for those that will be watching this, excuse me, later on, will know what was on the consent agenda. So Resolution 61 is approving the Jacob Henry Perkins Trust's disbursement of $5,000 as an interest-free loan, and the family that received that has already contacted us to arrange the beginning of payback. 62 is appointing Jonathan Joseph Grant, an auxiliary police officer for the Madison, for our auxiliary police, and we will be swearing that officer in at a later date. 63, appointing Gianna Salvatore at the position of per diem dispatcher at a rate of $22.50 an hour. Resolution 64 is shared service agreement with Berkeley Heights Mountain Lake Summit for IT services, one of the unique shared services we provide. 65 is stating that there is no objection to issuance of a temporary helostop license for every 15-minute program in Madison High School, which will be occurring on March 25th, and that raises drinking and driving awareness. The Resolution 66, supporting the Environment Commission Green Forum, and that is set for Drew, at Drew University in the evening of March 14th. Resolution 67 is determining the form and other details of note relating to construction finance loans for the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, and this is for the financing, the $4.7 million for the improvements at our sewage treatment plant we share with Chatham. That's a lot of pages. So now to Resolution 68, ratifying the appointment of interns Adrian Morales and James Datillo for part-time interns at finance electric utility departments at a rate of $14 an hour. Resolution 69, which I mentioned earlier, is allowing the use of Memorial Park for the Boy Scouts of America Patriot Pack, Patriots Pack 124 for overnight camping event in June. Resolution 70 is authorizing contract for joint court as the hosting community. We are the ones that approve the contract for, and this is for prosecutors and defenders. Resolution 71 is raffle licenses for Torrey J, PTO. Resolution 72 is renewal of livery license for Madison Limousine Service. Resolution 73 is same thing for travelers taxiing limousine. Resolution 74 is reduction and restoration bond of 49-19 Greenwood Avenue, and that is adjacent to Walgreens property. The bond will be reduced from $58,000 to $5,000. And then Resolution 75 is approving contract with Kyle and McManus Associates for our professional services regarding affordable housing, and that is our planner. So those are resolutions to make comment on, and all, those are all part of the consent agenda. Anyone wishing to comment on any of those, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we go to Agenda Discussions and our CFO, the 2019 Budget.
Thank you, Mayor. What do I, get on the screen? Thank you, Mayor. As discussed, we're going to be talking about the utilities this evening. We'll talk about crafting the budget a little bit, the process. We'll review the performance of both the electric and water utility. Jim Matina will give a presentation on field operations, goals, and initiatives, and just one caveat, all these numbers are still draft format. They're, they're, they're strong and close, but maybe tweaked as the weeks go by, they'll be closer to finalized February 25th. The budget schedule, which we talked about in the past, I'm not going to reiterate. I just like to have these slides up in case someone's watching them at home or here at the Council Chamber tonight. We'll talk about utility performance. Very soon thereafter, we'll be submitting our unaudited annual financial statements to the state of New Jersey. As Councilwoman, like Callie mentioned, the annual debt statement was submitted last week. Then February 11th, we'll talk initial budget discussion. February 25th, the other department heads will come in and talk, and then March 6th, we have a scheduled special meeting to discuss the revised budget and how it folds into strategic planning guidelines. So the budget process, real simply and quickly, I wanted to go through this just so the people more at home have an understanding. Capital budgets, who does it and when? It's done throughout the year by staff, council, department heads, utility advisory, and open space committee. It's done throughout the year. Department budgets, administration and the department heads work on this from July to September, so this past July to September, we worked with all the department heads on that. Financial document preparation starts to occur at that point in time, and we have presentations given to council starting in November and all the way through February, March, and into April. And then we have the public meetings with general, with the council and the general public December through March. That's a good summary of the way the budget process works. I think we've seen this presentation a number of times. This slide, I should say, shows how we complete a circle and rotate this more than one time, going through capital, open space, utilities, municipal budget, department operating, and how the guidelines fold into all that. And then we kind of go around the track maybe one more time and make sure everyone's comfortable with that. Three entities that we have, current fund, electric utility, and water utility for operating budgets. I'm going to go very quickly through a couple of these slides. We also have three capital accounts, one each for municipal, municipal capital, general capital, one for electric capital, and one for water capital. The three entities we have here, current fund, electric, and water, that's what's in the state budget document. That's when you ultimately vote on that for introduction in March, hopefully in adoption in April. Those specific numbers are embedded in that document. Capital accounts, we talk about them. We have a five-year proposed capital plan and a one-year, very refined, capital budget, but council votes on the individual ordinances for any capital item. Budget or spending plan, you've heard me mention this before. I think the term spending plan is a much better term because the numbers that are in the budget are set, and that's what we can spend. If we put $200,000 in for snow removal or for rock salt, that's all we have. Company or personal budget, you can make changes throughout the year. It's very hard to make changes throughout the year to the municipal budget. As such, we tend to be a bit conservative on our estimates. You may have $200,000 budgeted for snow removal, but may only use $120,000. What happens to the rest, the other $80,000, it becomes surplus, and that gets utilized in future years. Breakdown of your tax bill, you've seen this, these pie charts before, just real briefly, the change from 2017 to 2018, the municipal portion did not change, it was 22.5%. On the county portion went down, that had to do with an equalization factor that occurred that happens across the county. School taxes went up from 61.7% to 62.1%. We're going to go to the electric utility and talk a little bit about that. First, a little bit about transparency. All of this is available online on RoseNet, the annual budget process for multiple years. You can see, you can go back to 2016 if you want to see different documentation that we have submitted to the Mayor and Council. Every budget presentation, every discussion is, is linked on these pages. A little more about transparency, I love this document, I bring it out every year. At this time, I found this in my dad's basement. It's an annual report from 1944. It shows that back then, the borough was transferring money from the electric utility into the current fund. And back then, there was a lot of delinquent taxes and a lot of surplus because it was just post-World War II, so they effectively had no municipal property tax that year. It was only $4,000 of municipal property taxes, and it was $127,000 of electric utility transfers. So that's just kind of a neat fact. If anybody ever wants to see this, just come to my office, give me, give me an email, and I'll share it with you. So the electric utility, good news and bad news. I'll report the bad news, and I'll let Carmella report the good news. So, bad news, which we've been talking about, so it's not a surprise, increasing cost of transmission. Transmission is the cost of using the highways or the power lines to get the energy, the electricity from the generation plant to our substations. There we distribute it. That cost of getting the energy, electricity from the generation plant to our town border has increased significantly over the last few years due to a settlement with JCPL and a bunch of different market pressures. So we think that's leveled off for a couple of years, but the future, we're not so sure. So that's the one bad news, but we do have some good news items, and I'm going to let Carmella talk about those.
As you could see, in 2019, the block energy prices are going to decrease by $593,000. The capacity prices are dropping in 2019 to the amount of $632,000. So the total 2018 revenues were higher than we anticipated and increased by $1,490,000. That's an awesome, awesome record.
Yep, so we'll go through that specifically, but we had more good news than bad news, which is good.
Jim, not to interrupt, but I'm looking at this, and I don't see a million and a half increase. Is that some sort of net number?
It's a, it's a number from what we had originally estimated to what was ultimately here. So if you look at the 6.141 to the 7.4, that difference is about the $1,400,000 that we're talking about.
Well, that's, oh, that's the surplus, okay. I thought you said revenue, okay.
Well, and, and if you go, and I'm sorry, if you go up to revenue, I have a little pointer like Ms. Pearl always do, if you add up all lines one through four, the difference between those four lines is where the 1.493 million that Carmella mentioned.
Okay.
So that, that's where that is. So anyway, as a result of what Carmella just reported, the good, the good news, surplus generated, which is line 11 in this chart here, went up about $1.34 million, greater than we had budgeted or anticipated last year. Obviously, the sales, and we'll go over that in, in greater detail. So down here, we thought surplus was going to drop. We were a little concerned about that, surplus dropping from 2017 to 2018, but now it's actually gone up by close to $500,000. So that's, that's tremendous. We're thrilled with that. So I'm going to then go through each of these lines. I published this just in bigger format, so if anybody has it at home or prints this up, they can see the entire budget. I, I kind of don't highlight the other years because I don't want to throw out too many numbers, but if people want to compare year-over-year cash collections or miscellaneous revenue or block contracts, they can. This chart here, we'll go through kind of line by line, the benefit, the major changes that occurred. So Carmella referenced line one, which is cash collections. We had anticipated 22.5 million, and it came in much higher due to a hot summer. We had, we had a pretty warm summer. So that's part of it. We're also trying to glean and dig down deep to see how much of the impact could be Allergan, which was not really functioning and fully operable, and now they're fully operable. So we're, we're trying to look on a customer-by-customer basis to see how much of that is weather-related versus how much of that is customer-related. Line two, we're right, I, Pat Rowe and I worked on the, the mathematical formula for the dividend a number of years ago, and I just, I'm a numbers guy, so I think it's really cool that we got to within $45,000 of, of the dividend, the actual amount of money that people received on their, as a credit on their electric bill. It's a little bit higher, again, because of the hot summer. So line three, miscellaneous revenue is higher due to a couple of things. We received a large payment from the folks who are developing the Kings Road property over on the Green Village Road School for utility, I'm sorry, not utility, Victorian lamp posts that we installed for them. And then interest rates are higher than they were significantly, and we have been effectively working with our banks and working with the New Jersey Cash Management Fund, so the interest that's generated on the deposits that sit, that $9 million in surplus that's, that's sitting there is, was much higher than expected. So those two items impacted miscellaneous revenue, which is line three. Line five, Carmella referenced the block contract price dropping in 2019. Line seven, we talked about transmission costs, and we talked about it last year. That is the line that's going to show you the impact of transmission costs. There was a significant legal settlement that we knew was coming with JCPL, and that has set our costs until 2020. Beyond 2020, it's a little murky, but all indications are that transmission costs are not going to be going down after 2020. You'll see, not referenced here, but the capacity cost that Carmella talked about, which is line six, second on the expenses, that goes up and down. That price is set out three years. We have good, a good understanding of what that cost is going to be out three years. And then line 13, as I talked about, shows a surplus, shows surplus, actually, we didn't talk about it, this line here shows surplus transferred from the electric utility to municipal budget. Before anybody calls me out on it, this is just a total estimate number. We'll, we'll have those discussions in a couple of weeks. The goal for the Finance Department Administration, I know the long-term goal for strategic planning is to slowly reduce the amount of money that's being transferred from the electric utility to the municipal budget. So I've, I've shown that in line. It's just an estimate.
Before we move on, I have two questions. The first is, why did the cancellation of appropriations go up so much? I mean, it's $700,000.
So we had a significant amount of money because we weren't sure when that transmission settlement was going to occur. So the 2017 budget included, well, if this settles, we have to have the money in the budget to be able to pay for this. It didn't settle, so in 2018, those funds go into what's called appropriation reserve. We've talked about it a little bit in the past. Once the budget closes in 2017, invoices can come in in January, February, March, April, so we have that money in appropriation reserve to pay those. At the end of 2018, those appropriations are canceled. Not too dissimilar to when you cancel a capital ordinance, but in this instance, it's an automatic cancellation. So that's why that number is, is so high. I don't anticipate it repeating, but we're going to monitor that as, as well as the municipal, or as well as the miscellaneous revenues and the cash collections, to see if we can get a better, more refined number on that.
And my other request is, I noticed this year you budgeted the revenue line sort of $100,000 more than we have been averaging in the past. I would be interested to know between Allergan and also when the, the Atlantic Health Building comes online, how much additional revenue we think we're going to see coming out of them versus, I guess, 2016 when they were at zero.
Sure. Keep in mind, 2016 Quest Diagnostics, might announce, now it's not, so there's always these give-and-take situations. So I tend to budget on the conservative side for the cash revenues.
No, I understand that.
But there are years, as you can see, in 2017, the actual cash collections was $22,056, so.
Yeah, but I mean, we've added GVR, and that's going to be throwing off, you know, power usage, and that was never there for a very small, the, the school. And Atlantic Health is going to be a new building, and we're expecting that to be going, you know, great guns once it gets going and not ever really diminish, so it's not like one of the corporate offices buildings where you have to worry year-to-year what's going up and down. Thank you.
I think that one of the other things that we have to take into consideration also is that, you know, we have two interns putting in new meters at this point. So it's going to be very interesting to see. Right now, we're only talking about 100, but you know, what we, our expectation is to get those 5,800 houses taken care of. That's going to be kind of an interesting concept, too, so how we, we could break that down to see how that's going to help us. Wanted to ask you, you know, I made a reference to the block contracts and stuff. We understand it here. I'm not quite sure that people understand how well you do buying electricity and, and keeping that cost down, and why it's decreasing. So I know you have one slide, so can you just spend like a couple of minutes just explaining, you know, what those block contracts are and?
Sure. So years ago, before I was involved, when Robert Califford was buying electricity, and it was done in a completely different way, we bought a full requirements contract, and it was expensive, and we bought a five-year it was expensive, and we bought a five-year contract. And I kind of liken it to taking your wallet out and saying, "I'm going to buy all the automobile fuel I need for the next five years." Well, I went to Tommy's at T&amp;J's. He's probably not going to quote me $2.40, whatever it is at the pump now. There's going to be a lot of variability because he doesn't know what his costs are. So, during that time, there was a great expectation that prices would go up, but in fact, they went down significantly due to a softening economy. And so, now, we buy more like dollar-cost averaging or dividendary investment on a more structured approach where we're going not one time for five years. Every year, we'll buy two or three contracts and have a laddered approach so it blends. We don't hit home runs, but we don't strike out terribly or, or lose the whole World Series on one pitch. We, we end up having a nice blended portfolio or of, of various contracts, and this is what Carmella was referencing. Right now, we are, are long compared to our, our major competitors, which are the investor-owned utilities. This, let's put it around here. The top, the top portfolio that says purchased February 16, 7, 18, that's the investor-owned utilities. They only have two-thirds of their 2019, 2020 purchased. We're fully purchased, 2019 from 2020, 2020 from 1, 2, even that far out. So, the blue up there shows how many more contracts we've purchased. And we've done that because of the costs we receive on our most recent purchases has been really just, just exceptional, just great prices, under $30 a megawatt. So, that's a cost of, of a megawatt of energy. So, by that, we have seen a significant reduction, as Carmella referenced, in the block contracts, which is line five, the first line under expenses, in 6.3 million, 5.6. We're expecting it to be about 5 million, and then even though that, below 5 million in 2020.
Thank you. So, two, two points. One, that Rose Hall money, that was a pass-through, right? Because we went out and purchased the, the lights and installed them. So, that was just covering costs that we had incurred.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And secondly, going back, going back to the contract purchases, we, some people are concerned about the contract purchases. We've, we've done a very good job in terms of staying away from coal and other dirty fuels. Is there a possibility that we might explore the idea of waiting renewable slightly better in terms of if we had, if we went out, let's say we're going out for the 2022, 23, that remaining contract? If Nextera came in at 29.69 and Exelon came at 29.49, would we, well, maybe not that big a difference, but, but would there ever be, would there ever be a time or a position in which we made a decision to go with renewable as opposed to nuclear, even though nuclear or PSCNG, which is coal, would be cheaper?
So, you're correct that PSCNG is mostly carbon-producing electricity. Exelon is predominantly nuclear, and Nextera, very interestingly enough, is 75% renewable, wind and solar. So, it is an interesting mix. Right now, we buy just the lowest contract. Fortunately, Nextera, as you can see, our most recent purchases in 17, 18, 19, 19, Nextera has, for the most part, been the most competitive. I do like to have a diversity in the portfolio. I wouldn't want to buy all Enron. You know what happened there. However, this is a different story than Enron. We have a different, we have a much different credit review process. I don't want anybody to think we're buying a company like that. But, but down the road, if council wanted to, to say, "Hey, if, if, if it's up to three cents difference," three cents being the maximum, tilt, tilt the playing field towards renewables. That, that's a council decision. There's, you know, good argument to be made, and I know some will make it that, just buy the cheapest contract that we can.
Why are you looking at me?
Because you've said it.
As you wrap up the, kind of the operations part of the numbers, it might be worthwhile. Looking at the contracts we have going out, the success and the new thing coming on board is to, to run this scenario with a $2 million in, in the dividend or what I would call a rate adjustment category, just to see how that would work out. Because it certainly looks like we've got the capacity to do that, and as we've said, we, we want to be as competitive as possible, and I think we probably could do it.
Well, it's, it's interesting that we have had such a, you know, kind of what I would almost say is a one-time benefit of the miscellaneous revenue, the, the higher-than-expected cash collections, and the cancellation of appropriations. It sets itself up for exactly what the rate adjustment or dividend was, which is, we, we experienced this better-than-expected year. It's an opportunity to give it, to give it back to the customer. So, I'm certainly happy to run those numbers. It'll all be contingent upon a lot of the other decisions that are made by council along the way in the municipal budget. It's easy enough for me to do.
Jim, I would just point everybody at line 14, which is the free balance line, and the only way you can increase the rate cut is if you draw that down. So, you know, you have, one of the things that Ben and I looked at very carefully was how do we kind of bring it to a smooth, either landing or plateau? We could draw it down a little, but you'd have to be aware of the fact that at some point, you might have to just, you could have a couple of years where you give a bit more, but then drop back down to lower numbers.
And, and that's, you know, the, good point with the concept there. We, we don't want to see this bouncing up and down as we, we know that the setup for the joint meeting has hurt the neighboring municipality because of the way that was structured as opposed to making sure it's smoother.
Yeah. So, I was actually going to ask Jim two more questions. One is, when the joint meeting debt service kicks in, which is going to be a couple of years down the road, I'm assuming, given the way we currently do things, we would use money from the electric utility to cover that since it's a capital project?
Um, right now, we don't show that in the budget and brief that I have, the debt line. I don't say debt line covered by the electric utility, but.
Actually, we do.
We do. We do, actually. So, I would say it's not going to be a very large impact.
Okay.
And right now, our, the amount that we are spending based on the allocation percentages is such that I don't think we're going to feel a large impact of, of that debt coming on. We actually have a reduction of other debt because of the refinancing that we did and restructuring. So, I don't think we're going to see a large bump between that and the changes in the joint meeting operating budget. There's a big line in there about the joint meeting operating. So, we'll keep an eye on that, but I'm not, I'm not concerned about, I'm not terribly concerned about that, but that's something we'll keep an eye on.
Okay. Well, conversely, if we think the debt line's going to come down a bit at some point in the next couple of years, we could look to increase the rate cut slash dividend such that the free balance kind of cruze into a slightly lower but sustainable number. And then, the other thing I was going to ask is, I don't think we got it yet, but can we also get the, what's currently in the electric utility and the water utility capital funds, the, the actual number because?
So, it's about $900,000 to start in the electric utility fund. That's the free and available. That doesn't include.
Really? That much?
That doesn't, yeah.
Does that include the money we've been setting aside?
It doesn't.
Okay.
And we have about, only about $250,000 in the water utility.
So, you know how thrilled I am about setting aside the $300,000, and I'm less thrilled about the fact that we actually, I think we're actually putting it into the capital fund, or no?
What's that?
The $300,000 we're setting aside every year from the electric utility for the long-range?
It goes into the capital fund, but it's a reserve, so it's not part of that $900,000 number.
Okay. But once, but once it's in the capital fund, we really can't pull it back out again, is my understanding?
Um, we could look into that. I think it could be reclaimed back into the operating budget if there was an emergency.
Okay. Because, because my other recommendation is, given that the capital, free capital is so high, plus the money we've set aside, if the council still wants to reserve the money, instead of reserving it in the capital fund, just let the general surplus grow so that the money is available to the borough if it needs it for other things, other capital projects.
So, one possible option, referencing what you're talking about, Pat, is, is line 10, it's kind of hard to read it. Line 10, which is electric utility capital of 895. In a few slides, you'll see that capital budget, and, and we don't really quite get to 895. So, if I revise that number down to $800,000 or $750,000, we would still be funding enough in electric capital for Jim to do all the work he needs to do and for us to fund the metering projects and everything else. And so, that would then have that positive impact on free balance and surplus and allow for a, a slower or an easier tapering off. If we went up to 200,000, we wouldn't immediately drop back down to 1.4.
Okay. I'll, I'll explain to you on line what I'm talking about, but before we get to the next round. Thank you.
Okay. So, we talked about portfolio block contracts, a little residential rate comparison. Madison's rate from 2016, 2018 dropped by 7.3% because of the dividend. Other towns have gone up. Other towns have gone down. The investor-owned utilities, JCPN L has gone up. Atlantic City, PSCNG, Rockland have all gone down. We are certainly not in the Milltown or Pemberton world in terms of billing or South River in terms of our billings. So, we're kind of in the middle pack of all the municipal electric utilities. Were we to consider going from 1.5 million to 2 million in the dividend, that percentage number would get closer to 9% drop. So, that just gives you an indication of where our monthly residential bill compares to everyone else that sells electricity in the state. Jim will talk more about electric capital, but I just show this here that this evening, we have the traffic signal and actuators ordinance on and automated meters, 200,000, 100,000 across the board up there. Pat and I have been talking, and we're going to be meeting with some other companies that supply, that are going to supply us with the automated metering infrastructure. That number may hopefully be able to be reduced depending on how much the cost of the infrastructure is to implement. As Carmella referenced, we have two interns, and they're just doing a fabulous job installing all these meters quickly, efficiently, having very, really no customer complaints. So, what seemed to be a lot of talk in 2018 and 2017, we're actually getting these meters in in 2019. So, with that, the automated meters' goal is to have close to, we have 2,000 on order, and we hope to have 2,000 installed by the end of the summer. As Carmella said, we have a couple hundred already installed, and we have a, had a major security and system hardening goal that we've been working on. Administration Ray and Jim Matina and I and Ken O'Brien, we've been working on hardening the reliability with security enhancements, cameras and access controls, and we've been working on the water side on interconnection agreements and making sure connection to our neighboring water systems if we have a, a major issue and need to get water from our neighboring communities that, that we're able to do that. So, with that, we're going to have our esteemed electric utility superintendent, James Matina, come on up here and talk for a few minutes about, about his department.
I'm Jimmy Matina, Superintendent Electric Department. You don't know me. Hello, everyone. All right, I'm going to make glass. I'm going to talk a little bit about our two, 2018 complete projects that our department did. First one, we insulate insulation of the Victorian lamp posts and light fixtures on Kings Road from Prospect Street all the way to the KRE. It was 26 post lights we did. We completed the feeder line upgrade for the commercial customers on Waverly Place. Replaced all the street lights with LED fixtures on Main Street, Madison Avenue, and Park Avenue. It was 96 LED fixtures we did. And we repaired, instead of replacing the stairs at Kings Road Substation for a savings of $30,000. And we installed the new circuit from Madison Avenue to Lewinica Way for the new Gerardo Farms Atlantic Health Building. That was our completions of 2018, plus with storms and all our day-to-day operations. Okay. Our 2019 goals and objectives. Madison Green condo, reconstruct underground primary system. The department already replaced four transformers. Kings Road, new feeder line, Madison Avenue to Prospect High Point. James Park, replacing the relays. That must, must do. Water well on Station Road, once they start that, we're going to install the new transformer. We already bought that. Connection for the new fiber line between Kings Road and James Park Substation. We get that in, we could do a lot with that, too. And the training this year, because we got three new guys in our department, we got bucket truck rescue, we got pole top rescue, we got confined space entry, and we got substation arc flash equipment used. Actually, we've got to buy the equipment, and we've got to be trained in it. And plus CPR will be done this week. Department continues to monitor all aspects of our electric system to ensure the safety of our staff and the reliability in providing electric service to our customers. If you go down to 2019. Right now, I'm asking for $100,000 for the relays in the substation. There's going to probably be about 15 relays, maybe 5, at least. 200,000 meters. We've got 50,000 for landscaping. They took all the trees down by James Park. The lighting, the substation back there, James Park. And 100,000 for the traffic signal. That's Bob Vogel's stuff. That's it.
Thank you very much. And I really like the new lights on Main Street. They're out over the middle of the road. They seem brighter. It's kind of reminiscent of some of the streets you see in Europe where they suspend the lights over the middle of the road from one building to the next. So, thank you very much for the work you guys do. As Carmella said, you guys do a great job.
That's right. Twist the knife.
Thank you, utility liaison.
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Just one other thing I want to mention, Jim, before you step away, and I, you know, we had a quick conversation out in the hallway, but as we prepared for a storm that didn't quite materialize, we had department heads in here, and Jim really showed his leadership by saying, you know, "If, if our crews are not dealing with power outages, let us know what we need to do. We will assist with the snow removal, and it's Madison first. We're there to take care of the residents, whatever it is." So, thank you for the leadership.
Down. Thank you, Mayor.
Here, Jim.
Thank you.
We'll talk for a few minutes about the water utility and what's happening there. We didn't have any bad news, but we did have some good news, so I'm going to let Carmella talk about the good news.
See, everyone's so well. So, this is really good. I have a special affinity to water, and Jim and I talk about it all the time. And I'll use my, my, my old-fashioned response to, you can always light a candle, but the water is very, very important. Without good water, we're in big trouble. So, the performance for the water utility was, was better than it was expected, and the changes that we made last year have made the water utility very sustainable. There's no rate action that is going to be required right now. We may talk about it in the future, but it's not something that we're going to think about at this point.
So, we'll, we'll go through those numbers. Again, a larger chart, just for anybody that might be reading it at home or printing it. Then we'll go to a little bit smaller one that has some notes on it. The water utility is 1/10th the size of the electric utility in terms of revenue. However, we dedicated tremendous amount to the capital improvement of that. 2.5 million, 2.4 million in revenue coming in, $900,000 going back into capital to make sure the water pipes and the wells and everything are, are well-maintained. So, if you take a look at line two, miscellaneous revenue was higher, again, due to the interest earned. And then, secondly, we had a very large revenue that came in for Ford Gerardo, the Atlantic Health. Health, the connection feed to the water system. So that's why you see line 2 miscellaneous revenue being much higher than is expected. The estimates going out 2019 and '20, I pushed up because of the interest rate environment. So that helps make a rosier picture overall for the water utility. Line 4, last year and the year before, we talked about this. We worked on shifting some of the expenses in operations from the water utility to the electric utility. Some of them were split 60-40, with the electric utility taking 60% and the water utility taking 40%. However, with the revenue being so disparate, it was really putting more onus on the water utility. So examples of those are the meter-reading staff and insurance and other costs like that. So we made slight shifts, which really were a blip to the electric utility, but made a significant impact to that number in the water utility. So you see line 4, the first one under expenses, it goes from 2 million, actually goes down a couple hundred thousand to 1.8. So that, $200,000, really helped. And then, as I mentioned, line 5, we continue to invest a significant amount in the capital of the system and the infrastructure and the like. And then the sec, the other benefit or good decision that's been made that's helped make the water utility financially sustainable is the amount of surplus that's utilized in the municipal budget. And that's line 8 right there. You can see it from 500,000 to 400,000 to 200,000. So that's a $300,000 difference from a couple of years ago. So $500,000 in total difference between the amount of surplus that's taken and the amount of the expenses that were re-appropriate to the electric utility. Those two items have really had a positive impact down here on the change in surplus and this surplus line. Last year, two years ago, I was very concerned. Last year, I was still expressing concern about the sustainability of the water utility and being able to maintain that $900,000 capital line. Now, we see a very stable surplus balance where I'm comfortable, I feel comfortable to say that there really is no need to make any rate action at this point in time. The water utility is functioning well, and so I think we're in a much, much better shape than we were two years ago.
Well, Jim, I would agree. And the good thing about the water utility is, other than electricity, there aren't a lot of variables, the way there are with the electric utility, that drive our costs. So what we see there is fairly certain, with the exception of how wet is the summer and how much water do people put on their lawns? Because even with as wet as last summer, as I noticed, there's still a lot of huge drop in the amount of water that we sold year over year.
Correct. Correct. Yes. So that's just, as Carmella said, that's the good news. The water five-year capital plan, you saw it a few weeks ago, you saw it back in December. Late modifications, but nothing, nothing since the last draft that you've seen. But Engineer and Public Works have developed a robust five-year capital plan. They will be talking about that February 25th, when the department heads come in. But as I said, given the changes made in 2018, the utility can continue to fund these improvements on a pay-as-you-go basis. So are there any questions on water capital or water operations? Last thing I would say is, this is, with all upcoming budget discussions, we'll be talking about capital, we'll be talking about spending, we'll be talking about taxes and electric and water rates, and we'll be talking about how the electric utility surplus is used in the municipal budget. Those will be the upcoming budget discussions. I call this utility budget discussion the appetizer. The main entree is coming in the next few weeks with the municipal budget.
Well done. Any other questions?
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. All right. We will move on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held on January 14, 2019. All posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to reset ordinance by title. Ordinance 1-2019.
Ordinance, the Borough of Madison appropriating $1,688,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2019 road reconstruction projects, related work and miscellaneous projects.
I open the hearing for anyone in the public who wishes a comment. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 1-2019.
Second. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 1-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance accordance with the law. Ordinance 2-2019.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $880,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the 2019 milling and overlay projects.
I open the hearing for ordinance 2. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 2-2019.
Second. Any council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 2-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance accordance with the law. Ordinance 3-2019.
Ordinance, the Borough of Madison mending Chapter 195-12A of the Borough Code entitled Land Use Regarding Temporary Sign Permits to Establish Fees.
I open the hearing for ordinance 3. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 3-2019.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 3-2019 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice there of a newspaper and file the ordinance accordance with the law. And now we're on to the second invitation for discussion. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on any topic, may step forward. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes, and I will ask you to end at four. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Introduce your ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for February 11, 2019. Will be posted in the Madison Eagle or published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 4 for first reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 4, 2019, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $100,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund?
Electric.
Electric Capital Improvement Fund. Let's correct on the ordinance. It's the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for Signalization Improvements.
Mayor, I move ordinance 4-2019.
Second. This was covered quickly in the presentation. Any other council discussion or questions?
Could you just identify which signals are, I mean...
I can do it, Mayor. There's a list attached to the agenda recommendation from the engineer. They're primarily school districts and high pedestrian traffic areas, such as by the train station in front of this building and other locations that Complete Streets Committee identified.
Including the solar-powered actuator type that are, is now at Britton and Greenwood?
But these, these would allow, this would allow somebody crossing at a dedicated crosswalk that does, that's not linked to a traffic signal. What it, what my understanding is, it would allow them to set a flasher going, because, you know, in the state of New Jersey, if you're driving, you are required to stop if someone's in a crosswalk. But if you're in a crosswalk, generally, you wait for the car to stop. So this will, this will make crossing much safer.
Yep. And these are...
So it's $100,000 for Lincoln and Prospect, Kings and Maple, Danforth and Beach?
And the schools.
And the schools.
All the schools.
School sites.
Okay.
I think there's 11 sites?
It's difficult. He puts future discussion. So I just want to make sure those are included.
This is not to exceed 100,000. We'll see how far it goes, but those would be the priority sites.
All right. Okay. Thank you. It's not very clear.
Yep. Any other discussion? Hey, roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be written full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions R-61 through R-75.
Second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be polled? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
There is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the register?
Current fund, $4,072,351.2. General Capital Fund, $111,462.95. Electric Operating Fund, $913,697.1. Electric Capital Fund, $37,589.76. Water Operating Fund, $78,290.71. And the trust, $67,287.16. Total is $5,280,678.61.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
In our new business, I'd like to make the following appointment and request council confirmation. For the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, Phyllis Fleming of 54 Noe Avenue has an at-large member for annual term through December 31, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes.
And...
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well done.
I don't think this is in here. It really bothers me. I just, I didn't want to get...
Yep.